And processes in place to ensure that these groups are protected. During my recent time, I was just at the State Emergency Operations Center for a deployment period and the biggest focus happening there from the state level and which will be for, you know, ongoing for some time is focused on our nursing homes and our assisted living facilities, call them long-term care facilities. These patients in these homes are very vulnerable to COVID-19 and so we work with, the Department of Health works with ACHA, which is the Agency for Healthcare Administration, they're the regulatory agency of these places, to ensure that these facilities have robust infection control measures that are taken into consideration to protect the patients there but also staff. Just know that we do work closely with ours. We only have two in our county and in some other places, you know, Miami-Dade, they have nine hundred. So obviously it's a big focus around the state. Coming back to goals, what I told the board of county commissioners is that you really do start to appreciate just how lucky we have been through this. There have been hundreds of these types of outbreaks popping around and we've been fortunately spared. We are keeping our adverse population safe and again, the reason why we're focused on them is not because it's the most deadly virus to come, but they are more likely to have complications and need that medical assistance. And so we have to think and take into consideration and recognize the preventive measures that have been set by the state, board of county commissioners, city commission to protect our residents and then everything that the residents have been doing to protect themselves. So that just says that, you know, when you put a lot of emphasis into prevention, you do slow the spread of the virus, which impacts our most critical populations and that's what this is all about, maintaining and staying within our medical capacity. So, you know, again, this virus, this is new to us and we're all on the learning curve and we're still in active surveillance mode around the state. So we're still identifying new cases, contact tracing to control of outbreaks of those. And right now the state is seeing around the average of a thousand cases a day. Eventually you'll begin to see that plateau and we're looking at the data and the governor's office is looking at that data as well as the Department of Health as we move into passive surveillance. And that's when you do the antibody testing. I think you guys probably all heard about that or there's some media noise around it and that's to find out, you know, who had exposure, didn't know about it, now has antibody and might, you know, would have immunity for some time and other things, you know, you're hearing about. And when the dust settles, epidemiologists will use widespread passive surveillance to more accurately estimate how many people who contracted the virus became seriously ill or died from it. And we're just not there yet in terms of antibody testing. But we do, we are emphasizing why social distancing practices and other measures to protect yourself from exposure are still so important. So we'll look to follow state leadership through these transitions from active to passive surveillance and the state is looking into standardized recovery. We get asked a lot, well, what about recovery being the one that's coming? And from a state lens, they're looking at a standardized data process for providing that information. Our case that we have, obviously, is no longer infection. And but, but other places that have hundreds and hundreds of cases, you know, they have, it takes a longer time to look at recovery through that lens. So let's talk about testing for a minute. We continue to test patients, your healthcare providers continue to test patients. We get asked a lot of questions about expansion of testing. We're, we hear, we hear, we hear you. Healthcare providers are able to test beyond CDC criteria and they have been testing folks beyond CDC criteria, but health departments right now, you know, we've been focused since the beginning, under the direction of the state surgeon general, to ensure that our testing capabilities and capacity is available for these adverse populations. You know, and if we want to work on projects to test more individuals in the community, we have to ensure that our healthcare providers have the resources, the technical supplies, the PBB, in order to do this. And, and these projects are dependent on commercial labs, not state laboratories and the wait time can be longer. And so that's not what the residents like to hear, but that is the reality of testing right now. And so we are looking at some projects. I'm exploring one with Weeds and Atlas to identify some potential role community testing project. And the person that the CEO is working with in another county hospital, he's dealing with that very same thing, you know, testing taking longer than, than they were hoping for. So certainly we'd love to test everyone at some point, but we have to stick, you know, and ensure that our capabilities and capacity are met for those who, who would need it the most. So I think if we're overly concerned that we have exposure in our community that we don't know about or until we have, you know, enhanced capabilities for testing, like antibody testing, social distancing measures remain key to preventing the spread of COVID-19 and the absence of the beginning. And I think that's why we're doing so well. We're great on Unicat.com's website. I'll say that the White House recently sent out that guidance, the reopening guidance, and it provides that gradual transition for protocols for businesses and others to reopen. And it begins with criteria that is looked at and monitored for 14 days before the state starts. And the governor has assembled the reopened Florida Task Force Executive Committee to discuss the reopening of Florida's economy. And I know we're all, you know, anxious to see what that's going to look like in alignment with the White House guidance. And what you'll see is that with these gradual reopening phases, that social distancing will be implemented throughout each phase with every business that opens that up. So there's a lot to take into consideration here. Obviously we're following the governor's guidance orders as well as the Department of Health to provide our residents with the most up-to-date information and we'll continue to do that. You can still contact us at the Health Department with any questions related to COVID-19 and more. And of course we keep our daily briefing updated. And so that's, that's basically the updates that I have. I did just leave the county commission meeting where they, we're opening beaches at certain timeframes and so we'll be providing that in the update that gets announced in residence today.
Questions for Sarah? I've got a couple. Sarah, you're talking about testing. You've got the Department of Health, PanCare, the hospital, the doctor. Who, where are you seeing most of the tests come from right now? Can you actually tell us? We've done, according to your latest updates, about a hundred and ten tests. They've done Gulf County.
Probably the majority is coming from the hospital setting and then PanCare, which, you know, is in their initial phases. They're ramping up, but I would say the hospital probably is where the cases are coming, the testing's coming from the most, then followed by your healthcare providers.
Okay. So, so can somebody actually come to the Department of Health and have a test or would you rather them go to PanCare or doctor or?
The protocol that we set since the beginning still remains the same. We're, we're there in support. We do want individuals to reach out to their healthcare provider so that they can be ruled out for other forms of respiratory virus and on the face.
What, what I've seen in our area, let's put it that way, is number of tests versus the positives, running anywhere from five to 10% of those tests. So, so a population of 14,000 Gulf County is running 5% and we tested everybody, we possibly could have 700 positives in Gulf County. And so with, with only one positive so far, I mean, it's wonderful and we're grateful that everybody knows what they're supposed to be. Over that, we really don't know if we're plateaued, accelerating, decelerating. It's kind of, it, just like I said in our last meeting, I'm scared folks are going to get complacent and, and we just don't know what will come out. Any of us in here could add it right now.
Right. So I think that's why it's important through our phases of reopening that we follow the CDC guidance on social distancing, on the other measures that you need to be taking to protect yourself because you don't want another surge of, of cases happening. And we've been very fortunate in our community to not have that happen and we want to, we want to keep it that way. The same with the beaches. As those hours are open to our residents so that they can engage in some essential activity, we will be asking that those with, you know, underlying medical conditions or, you know, who are at risk, they, they still follow the safer home orders. And then those on the beach take precautions to protect themselves. So social distancing would still happen on the beach. Mask gathering groups, stay under 10 and you carry antitoxin and avoid touching your mouth, your eyes in, in face. And so those are all important measures that are still going to happen as these, as these phases begin.
Is there any talk at state level about the governor requiring masks out in public settings?
Right now the CDC, I would say that they're, they're still following CDC guidance, which is on the use of cloth mask coverings for places where it is difficult to maintain social distancing measures. So your grocery stores, your pharmacies, those type of places. And then of course, you know, for our healthcare workers, having utilizing N95 masks and surgical masks for people who are, who are sick and need to be wearing those.
Anybody else? Thank you for what you do and your staff and thank you for coming and keeping us informed.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to protect our, our residents.
We're trying.
You're a great job.
Feel free to correct us when we, when we move outside of your recommendations, keeping these people safe.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, guys, let's move on to the agenda. I guess I need to speak into this. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which minutes of regular meeting of April 7th and emergency meeting April 14th, found on pages one to five of your agenda packet. If anybody had a chance to look at those, see any additions or corrections we need to make. Entertain a motion to approve. It is motion by Commissioner Hoffman. Second.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Lowery. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? All the same side, motion passed 4-0. I don't, it's Commissioner Ash, there he is. Can you hear me, Commissioner Ashbrook? He was.
I can hear you.
Okay, very good. Okay, all right, let's go straight to the city attorney, to the hot button item, is the boat ramp emergency. Kay Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone is aware, the commission charged me at our last meeting, which was last week, to draft an emergency ordinance to restrict the use of Frank Bay Park Boat Ramp Associated Parking Area to permanent Gulf County residents only. I went ahead and did that. I believe you all should have a copy of that with a couple of things to note. What allows us to do that is the fact that there is the state of emergency declared. If there wouldn't, case law suggests it would be unconstitutional to restrict that boat ramp, which is what we're talking about. Under this declaration of emergency, we are allowed to do so. We're also doing it under Florida Sexton Statute 25238, which allows you to take whatever action necessary, if you believe that on a rational basis helps with the current condition of the state of emergency that's been declared and it helps to help safety and welfare. I have also, I left the emergency ordinance effective date blank based on the fact that we had some, we don't know exactly when we can get these signs printed up, so I just left that blank. You guys will need to decide when we're going to have it. We'll, we'll back. It's, will be, I did put in a sunset date. You guys of course will come back and change this at any time, but I also sunsetted this emergency ordinance with the declaration of emergency. So if the state of Florida rescinds that declaration of emergency, this ordinance will go with it. That's what it brings. Also, the Statute 252 allows for our enforcement mechanism, which in this case is under 252.50, which is a violation of this ordinance would be second degree misdemeanor, which is punishable by up to 60 days in jail. And it's, our police officers, our police department should be able to report it the same way that they were at the beaches by issuing a notice to.
Very good.
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Floor's open to questions for Clint or additions or what have you. Anybody? If I had a chance to look over it, I'm sure.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Just a specific question to people that own second homes. Would this prohibit those people from utilizing the boat ramp?
Yes, sir, if they're not Gulf County residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we've all had emails and comments on that, I'm pretty sure. Okay, we need to, I would like, go ahead.
I'd like to just for the record, to ask, do you have any comments or email, the system that we set up?
I've, I've got, I have one and I think Commissioner Hoffman's had one, but probably the same individual that's actually has a second home here and doesn't feel like he's, you know, an out-of-state resident that has, that has a second home and is a property owner should be excluded. And so, thank you, the name is Mr. McQuiggan, lives on around 17th Street and that's the only one I've got.
Well, we went round and round about what the enforcement, that we could just deem possible.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt. So, but I, I did want to bring that up and I told him I would bring it up at the meeting that he felt like they should not be excluded because they're property owners, but, but I believe our board feels like the, the whole intent of what we're doing is to folks that live in other states, abide by their stay-at-home that their governors have asked them to do, just like we're staying home here and we just prefer them to stay home at this time until the emergency declaration is lifted. So that's the whole, whole point of our intent of our, of our ordinance.
The gentleman you're referring to, has, they have been here since January? They were here before this went into effect, but they have been here since January?
Yeah, he, he did mention that in his email, but it's probably not something we'd make an exception for one individual and not all the others, but thank you for bringing that up. Yes, sir, Ms. Anderson.
Mayor, I do have the information also attached to record to the signs before we should move forward. I have talked with Rans and Prentice, who's going to stand by and print these forward, so you could have gone and made the effective date today if you wish, but it will be tomorrow more likely to be the signs.
Okay, I, I think in, in our, in our motion on this ordinance, we do need to put an opening date on there, so effective date. So with that being said, I entertain a motion for an emergency ordinance 572 with an effective date attached to it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, effective date today, since the, since the signs can be made by tomorrow. I'm bummed that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to our emergency ordinance 572 with effective date today, which is April 21st. Is that second?
Question, Mayor?
You said second, Commissioner Ashbrook?
Yes, sir. Just have a question about the, we were going to identify locals through a different colored sticker. Have we printed those up?
Commissioner, we do have some ordered up. We have not received those yet. Yes, sir, we have ordered up a different color. They're going to be purple and gold. So we actually, for St. Joe, so we have ordered those up, you know, so we have not received those today.
But, but I think in the ordinance that asks, or not in the ordinance, but in the signage, it asks you to put your vehicle registration on the dashboard if you do not have a sticker at this time. So that, that does give them away, but of course they'll have to get out of the vehicle to look, but, but that's, that's all. Once we pass ordinance, though, I think that's identified in the signage.
Today, if we don't have the signs until tomorrow?
Yeah, I, I think we both can put, we simply just put a time limit of nine o'clock going out there and then we put the signs up there tomorrow.
Yeah, because, I mean, you, you know better than I do, you see if you folks launch them.
Well, I'm just concerned if they say it's open today, then we don't have the signs. We haven't really accomplished what we're trying to do. I would feel more comfortable moving the opening until.
You could say, you could say midnight tonight, Commissioner Lowery. And.
Open effective 4/22 at 12:01.
4/22 at 12:01, that's okay, you want to amend your motion ahead. Commissioner Ashbrook?
Second stance.
Second stance, okay. Everybody comfortable with that? All right, we'll open the floor. More discussion? Anybody in?
I, I agree with that. It makes it difficult for us to enforce anything if those signs aren't on. So if somebody shows up in the morning at five o'clock and launches a boat, there's no sign, we're kind of dead in the water on doing anything, but, but that's fine. The other thing I was just wanting to clarify, it's probably something I'm not getting here. If they have a sticker, it still doesn't mean they're a primary resident, right?
That's correct. That's why the sticker thing didn't work.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion? Any discussion from anyone listening on Zoom or online? In public? Okay, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign, motion passed, five up.
City of, I'll just go ahead and read it for the record. Please do. City of Fort St. Joe, Florida, emergency ordinance 1570, emergency ordinance of the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, recognizing the national, state, and local state of emergency due to COVID-19 symptoms, allowing users of the city boat ramped, associated parking area, located at Frank Bay Park, permanent Gulf County resident only, providing coverage, providing for self-probability, providing effective date and a sunset. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, now let's talk about the boat ramp signage. This on page nine. Does everybody have a chance to look at that? Feel comfortable letting city staff go ahead and order those signs and put them on?
Mayor, should we put something on there to the effect, you know, either your registration or new window or, and then name the color of the sticker that they could receive, if that's a purple sticker, one or the other?
It may be good in the future, but at this point, there's no difference between it because they're all purple.
I actually support striking that sentence because it's confusing to me. Strike the sentence that says boat ramp stickers must be displayed. The stickers have.
They're irrelevant.
Something to do with what we just passed.
You're right, Commissioner Ashbrook and Hoffman. So under, under number two, let's strike boat ramp sticker must be displayed on rear window. All righty. Okay, everybody comfortable with, with that? I don't think we need a motion, but the, just make sure the signs that say permanent Gulf County residents only are large enough. I assume they're going to be placed where the closed signs are at the present time.
That's the plan, to probably make it those same size signs, change it to this version and then place one by their pay box if people can see as a wrap.
All right, I just want to make sure there's no gray area in the boat ramp rules that that's going to cause some problems, but everybody's okay with it. We'll go ahead. Turn staff, everybody fine with it? Don't make any changes? Okay, all righty, we'll, we'll move on to, to old business. Jim, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. We did get an update from this here, the Hill Department. We also still do have in place residents in 2020, that's the two, keep in place after our motion resolution. So at this point, we still recommend that we keep on our backs and we still honor the government's, at the time. Any other questions or concerns in reference to the residents or the state of emergency?
You're, you're just asking if, I mean, it's, it's there, so you're saying that we want to keep it enforced, but if we don't do anything, it's stat stated.
That's standard.
That's right.
That's exactly right.
Okay, all righty.
The next item we have is in reference to the census 2020. We're just, we're trying to make sure that you get out there and counter for the city of Fort St. Joe is critical, that we're all catered for, that we're funding state and federal.
Absolutely, and, and yourself as well as your neighbors. If neighbors need help, we encourage them, it's church or wherever you, you know, congregate for my folks, it's, it's extremely important. So, okay, let's go to new business, the trash transfer station.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We have been required to see about the possibility of working with BCC to utilize a facility out there. Been working with the city attorney. We've done some research on there. We still have some, some information. We still need to research, need his expertise on as far as the deeds. There's a lot of, lot of information restrictions on the deed that we haven't figured out all the ins and outs.
A little more copy. Okay, just whatever you, whatever you find, make sure you keep us all informed going forward.
I plan on doing that for whatever other options available.
Okay, all right, good deal. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all righty, we'll move on to Public Works. John, John Grant, are you online?
Hey, hey, Mayor. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right. You have anything you need to report or would like?
Uh, no, no, sir. We're just, just an update on the Jones Home Tech project. We're trying to get that wrapped up by the middle of next week and we'll be moving on from there.
Okay, very good. Any questions for John and his staff? Anybody? Okay, let's go to the surface water. Larry, are you around? Larry McClam, if not, any, Jim, you got a report on that?
Yes, sir. He is, which you ever clarifies, he is getting good water quality reports, so he gets everything he's going.
Very good, okay. All right, now, ready for a couple of hours with Mr. Mike, our finance director. And we've got a, we've got a handout on page 10 through 13. He's going to try to bring us up to date on where we are on insurance and FEMA reimbursement. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can.
Yes, page, page 10 through 13 is a summary of where we stand as far as our insurance, recovery, expenses on repair from hurricane damage and our current FEMA status. If, if you look on page 11, our, our, our current insurance total is $2,316,000. And the current estimate for FEMA is $1,300. Excuse me. But a lot of that FEMA money we've not actually received, we've only received the 335K from FEMA today. We're still working through the large projects.
Okay, Mike, things highlighted in yellow, I assume, are what we received. Is that correct?
That's correct. The items in orange are, are money that has been allocated to the state and approved with FEMA, but we've not actually gotten the money yet from the state. The items that are not highlighted are still in negotiation, are basically waiting for FEMA to finish their calculation of the cost estimate and, and for us to agree to the settlement So, so, you know, a lot of those are, I, I think are done, I think those numbers are accurate, but FEMA has just not finalized their, for whatever reason, their calculations.
Okay, I do find it interesting that we got under the FEMA column, $4,540 for the city hall police department, we got $33,000 for a tennis court, so I can follow some of that logic from insurance. Four thousand five hundred and forty dollars for a city hall police department, we got thirty-three thousand dollars for a tennis court, so, I don't, I can follow some of that logic from insurance and FEMA, but, uh, um, what it is.
The logic behind, you know, the logic behind that is, their estimate was pretty close to what the insurance distribution was, so the dis, the insurance distribution wiped out the, the bulk of their calculation. But we received, they calculate a number and then they subtract the insurance from it.
Okay, uh, my other question, my, uh, you might have already said this, sounds coming in fairly good, but I'm going a little hard here, but. Anyway, it appears to me that we've got one point, one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars still owed to us by FEMA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so, there's still a lot of money out there, uh, folks, and appreciate Mike and everything he's doing, but, uh, is there any light at the end of the tongue?
Well, well, I think there is, um, the sticking point, I, I think, is, is not going to be with FEMA. Once it's released, a lot of these are large projects, uh, and, and, and the state is really hitting me hard on reviewing supporting documentation before they release the money. So, so FEMA sends it over to the state, and then the state does another background check about the information. You can see on page eleven, the, the emergency refund of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You know, that's an example where FEMA's approved that, and the state's been hammering me for the last two months on that amount, and has not released that four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to us yet.
Wow, okay. Okay, alright guys, uh, any questions?
One, one comment on that, Mike and I did discuss that, this week, we're gonna try to set up a conference call with our state mayors on, like, the federal, like you said, the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars FEMA's turned to the state, so we're gonna try to get a conference call with the state, find out if we can stop that lobbying at the state level, to keep these funds flowing, and figure out how can we ease that along the process to get the checks.
Very good. Okay, anybody? And, and of course Jim and Mike both available all the time to, uh, answer specific questions, uh, concerning where we are with, uh, FEMA and/or our insurance, so, uh, uh, because we do have an item on the agenda that, that relates to reimbursement and so forth.
Another thing I'd like to point out, mayor, about that, on page thirteen, that, that's a summary of the revenues we've received, and, and I, we've escated all of those funds into our escrow or, or savings account.
Okay.
Did not spend any of that time, or any of those funds.
Okay, Commissioner Lowery had a question, I think.
I was just gonna kind of make a statement, they, it appears on page eleven, it looks like we've got three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, or, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen, in recoverable depreciation. So, as we go through and complete those projects, we can file that back and, and get that recoverable.
Yeah, that's great. Mike, did you hear that?
Absolutely, that's definitely correct, and, and I think probably seventy-five percent of that is work that we will do and will be recoverable.
Very, very good. Any other comments, questions for Mike?
Mayor, mayor, I had one, uh, the trash, did we skip over the transfer station under new business?
Uh, yeah, I guess we could, I mean, if I have a problem skipping from.
No, 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 I, I just asked if, has it already been discussed? Because my question, insurance related, was if it's gonna be difficult to, uh, make that deal happen with BCC and the transfer station, could we pull some of that insurance money from that to maybe do the engineering on the city hall complex?
Um, yeah, I, I don't see, see why not, I, I just think there's some, some complicated things going on with that property out there at transfer station, so, we need to get that cleared up before we can, I think, talk to BCC about utilizing it.
Okay, that was just a thought for, for use of those funds, uh, we're gonna need to come up with engineering and architecture for the site if we're gonna start applying for grants to build it.
Those insurance funds are not restricted, we have the ability to adjust them to our needs.
I, I didn't hear that, mind.
Those insurance funds are not restricted, we have the ability to, to adjust them to, to meet our needs.
Basically, we can transfer the money to their needs.
Okay.
Exactly, so if you decide, like you said, once you get your input, uh, to decide if the better need for those funds, you know, it's likely.
Okay, very good. That answered your question, Commissioner Ashbrook.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, nothing else on this, we'll move on to the, uh, city engineer, and that's page fourteen through twenty. And I don't know if Clay is online, or Jim, you're gonna take the lead on that?
I can't, Clay, there? Smallwood, you there?
Y- yes, sir, I'm here.
Uh, basically, what we have, we have two task orders to come in for consideration of that. One is for the rehab, and one is actually for new construction of the Long Avenue project. The Long Avenue project consists of several different, uh, factors. One being the lift station, which you've already asked Mr. Smallwood to engineer, okay? Number two would be the actual, uh, sewer line itself, which has to rehab versus the new construction. Have your store won, have the board, and have the road put back together. So, you've got all this has to come together for this one project. So, basically, what you're looking at, when you turn up everything together, if you look at putting in the new sewer line, you're roughing it around six million dollars. That's water, storm, road, put everything back together. If you decide to go with, uh, rehab, you're looking at a cost tag of about four point seven million dollars, okay? So, basically, right now, what we're trying to do, these task orders, we're trying to get up to the sewer side of the state revolving fund, alright? The state revolving fund currently has some options to give us up to eighty percent, uh, grant, twenty percent loan. So, basically, these have to be put in place by June, so, put all this in perspective, what you're looking at today, this is about sewer, but the overall picture is, Mr. Smallwood's already done the engineering on the water side, we're thinking that cost is about one point two million dollars. Money's been set to the side in the state revolving fund for the water side, we've gotta contact them again, and get them back on, on board to allocate that money for this project. One point two over on the water side, basically, if you do the rehab, you're going back to SRF and asking for about two point five million dollars. If you decide to go ahead with the, uh, with the brand-new line, it's about three point eight million dollars. So, there's your difference there, eighty percent. So, basically, what is, what is all this meaning at the end of the day? If you were to go with the rehab, what this means to us is, basically, you're looking at, right now, the storm and the road, we don't have any current funding for that. If you did the new line, you could go to SRS and, and ask for some of that, but you're also gonna have to tear that road up probably for a year. Versus rehab, you can do it in the equipment's on there, with the slip line. Uh, and it's about one point three million dollars more for the total project. If you go with the rehab option on there, basically, what you're looking at is, you're looking at a loan, let's call it seven, about seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which will be, that's the twenty percent. Now, this is if we get the eighty percent on the water, and eighty percent on sewer. You're looking at about five hundred and one thousand for the sewer, and two hundred and forty for the water, based on those numbers that we have to estimate and calculate, okay? Cash on hand, you're gonna have to look at your storm and your road, we're still gonna look for other options for funding, but those more likely, have to come out of some of this money we talked earlier about, whether it's contract proceeds, or whether it's gonna be some FEMA money, or something like that. That comes out to about nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, okay? Then, what you're looking at for your total is about four point six seven five, which you're totally looking at. So, at the end of the day, if you went with the rehab process, and we get approved at eighty, twenty, we're looking at about a loan of about seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, uh, coming out of pockets somewhere around a million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Out, out of pocket, you mean with water and the sewer project?
Yes, that would be, uh, because the main part that we don't have anything allocated for right now is the, the storm of the road.
Right, and, and the road, uh, was estimated at like seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars round figures, is that right, Clay?
Yes, sir, that, that's in the right ballpark, seven fifty, something like that, yes.
Okay, so that's another, uh, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars that, that we've gotta come up with, but, but we hit, and we put it aside, uh, get a million dollars from the state that we've got, uh, we've got escrowed more projects that we might use, so, so I think, uh. Yes, it appears that out of project, I mean, out of pocket for the whole Long Avenue rehab, is gonna be our money, I'll say, I'll call it our money, a little over a million dollars for a, almost a five million dollar project, which is, which is pretty good for something that's a hundred years old and needs doing. So, I think what you need, uh, from us today is, uh, to, uh, vote on a, a task order for either the, uh, rehab total, or the, uh, total renovation, I guess you'd call it. One of them being eighty-five thousand, four hundred, and the other, uh, one hundred and forty-five, seven fifty. I think Jim said he's met with John and, uh, Clay on the rehab and slip lining, and they feel, feel good about, uh, the prospects of that working force for a long time, fifty. You know, minimum fifty years, so, uh, looks like a pretty good deal, and, and we've got, we've got the first street lift station task order in. Returning this, this task order, you can bundle those two up, the lift station sewer, send it in to, uh, to banks at, uh, DEP, is that where we?
Yes, if this big sewer side, we'll bundle that one up.
Right.
And then we're gonna bundle up the water side, and send it to the water side, and they all live together, so we can, we can work on the project, we're talking about the.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, sorry I burned your calculator up, but, uh, needed some, needed some figures, uh, comments from the board?
I've got a question. If we went with the rehab option, is that moving the sewer line, water line, out from under the road to the right-of-way on the side of the road?
Not only sewer, sewer would be left in place, you'll have a few more repairs to do when they get into it, that'll have to actually be dug in on the line, but the idea is, we're, basically what they do is they go in and put a line around the pipe, and prepare the pipe for piping.
Where it stays, so we would still have the issue of the line under the majority of Long Avenue, I guess.
And the plan even with the new is not to keep that out, I don't believe.
Oh, but they still wouldn't move it?
Water line we're gonna pull out, it's on the right-of-way, but the sewer line, I don't think they'll be able to do it even if we.
Oh, okay, and that, that makes a question.
Two is you have all the lateral, you gotta read that, there's so many lateral from all the houses tying it all the way along.
I, I would say my only concern would be that, that old pipe, if we go in there and rehab that, that stuff, um, I mean, we see what, what sewer's doing under Garrison Avenue, and I'm just, I'm really nervous about slip lining that pipe without just replacing it.
Clay, you have some comments on that?
I, it's, uh, I, I mean, I would just say, you know, this slip line is, it's a proven technology, I mean, we've, uh, it's been around probably thirty years, I would imagine, uh, something like that, since the early nineties, they were kind of up and going on it, and so there's, there's a number of places around the country, and some here places in the Panhandle that you can go to, and, you know, and they've had success with it. I mean, we've seen it firsthand, and certainly have talked to other folks at other times about it. Um, what, it, it, it stops the, the leaking of the joints is the biggest thing you're gonna get from it, and that's what you see on Garrison Avenue when, you know, things are, when the, when the road's dipping in, it's typically because the joints are leaking. And this'll, this'll stop that.
Really, that was my question, uh, what's the difference, and you answered that, but Commissioner Lowery's got one question.
So, I'm, I'm guessing, Clay, if we, we've got some, some spots that are broken, I'm assuming we'll repair those?
Yes, so the video will show those, uh, right before they do the slip lining, they'll clean the line and take a video of it, and if there's any joints that are offset too bad, then they'll dig down, repair those before they slip line it. Um, and then they also have the ability to, to line the laterals all the way up to the right-of-way line, so, from the main up to the right-of-way, that lateral will be lined as well.
Okay, okay.
Question, mayor?
Go ahead.
Life expectancy of a repair versus replacement, what, what's the difference? How much life are we gonna get out of this?
I, I think the repair, you can, you can expect more than twenty years out of the repair. Um, very, very few engineers will tell you that a new sewer line will last, I mean, a typical answer for a new sewer line is longer than twenty years, but as we've all seen, you know, the lines in the city, they last much longer than that as well, but the, you know, safely, I can tell you it's gonna last more than twenty years.
Okay.
And, anyone else?
Yeah, one other question, as far as the water line, I know we have problems with the old water line, uh, causing issues with the drinking water, would the water line be all replaced, or is it just repaired?
Brand-new line, uh, we have replaced, I mean, any of your water lines in town have been replaced, your main trunk, we saved the best for last, but we always save, uh, your main trunk line, because it's your large line, we have had a lot of problems out of, but we're gonna probably do it, we're gonna replace the water line there, uh, with brand-new.
That, that's the other part of the, of the dollar amount that we had to apply separately to, to that group.
We're guessing about one point two million dollars to get a contract to replace that water line.
Okay. One other, more question? Okay, uh, let's move to the NERDA grant. Uh, yeah, we need, we need somebody to make a proposal on which one of these to go with, and, uh, in form of a motion.
Motion to do the rehab?
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to do the, uh, task order, uh, proposed fee for rehab in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Langston, second motion, any further discussion? Any discussion in, from the public? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same time, motion passed five and a. Alright, now we go to NERDA.
Yes, sir, mayor, what you have on this is, Mr. Smallwood, uh, based on the task order from the NERDA grant, has provided three draft options for you, actually have a, a map here. What we're at is, we had to cancel our second workshop due to COVID nineteen, uh, we've had discussions with Water Management District, uh, Karen Keever from this past week, um, as soon as this passes, we do need to hold that public workshop again, and go through with the public these three options that we have. So, right now, it's just in the draft form, I sent an email out to you the other day, I have our copy, so you don't, at this point, be taking a look at it, we even put it on our website, so the public can be looking at it too. We're just paying to take comments in at this point, so we can get that workshop to kind of narrow down your options for you.
So, so, uh, three options, all three options, uh, I assume, uh, monetary amount totals the grant that we have, is that correct, Clay?
Um, they don't necessarily max out the grant, I'll, I'll get you a cost estimates for each of those three over to you, uh, or over to Jim, so he can disseminate those as well.
To me, that, that option two was, uh, was quite a bit more involved than the other two.
Yes, sir, yes, that's true.
Right, I mean, no sense in proving, let's say, option two, it's cost twice as much money we have. Uh, okay. Any questions, uh, Clay on the NERDA, everybody kind of get an idea what, what to propose? Okay. Anything else for, uh, city engineer, anyone? Commissioner Ashbrook, you okay?
I'm good, mayor.
Okay, alrighty. No, and thank you, Clay, and we'll, uh. None, thank you, Clay, and we'll, we'll move on to code enforcement.
Mayor, just want to remind everybody to, with your yard debris, the pickup schedule is on the website. Right now, currently, our provider picks up once a week, or once a month, I'm sorry, on a weekly basis, and you're limited to a four by four pile of just yard debris, so make sure that if there's anything beyond yard debris on the city right away, it's gonna fall under code.
Okay, questions about that, comments? I have one comment, of course, yard debris is our, is our biggest complaint citywide, that, that BCC is not living up to their contract on sweeping the whole city once a month. It appears they're, they're cherry picking items, and it's just, it's not getting done, and if somebody, if the yard is missed one month, and they decide to clean up their yard, they put it on top of the pile, and now the pile's too big, and so that goes beyond the contract that we agreed on. So some, something needs to give somewhere about picking up yard debris. So y'all come up with some creative ideas, I've, I've worked with Jim, I'm asking to talk to Clint and, and Mr. Tonell about the shortcomings of, of yard debris. I've got some out of the box ideas I'm throwing around to Jim, and we come up with something, I'm gonna certainly bring it back to the board for, to look at, see what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree, I've, I've heard the same thing. I mean, you might get six weeks, it might be six weeks before they come to a certain household, and like you said, there's, they dump twice on the right away, so, I mean, I hear you loud and clear.
And I'm, I'm sure everybody else here is something.
Mayor, I've got a question on that. Is there, is there any way to work it out where we could possibly use the old city transfer station as a lay down yard for anybody that has yard debris that maybe exceeds the pile? And have them pick it up once a month from that one location?
I, I don't know, I, I think it falls right back to the issue of a complex scenario that the attorney's working on with that old area out there, so till we get that resolved, I don't think we'd do that.
But it would be a continued use, we would just use it to bring people, citizens could drop off their yard debris there, and then they don't have to have so many people running around town, they can pick up in one place. Just a thought, another outside of the box.
Yeah, we had, we gotta think outside the box, Commissioner Langston?
I, I believe if we do that, you open it up a can of worms, because you just got furniture, refrigerators, and everything else out there, because you don't have anybody out there to police. That's a good idea in one scenario, but another scenario, we need to think about that, because our code enforcement officer's doing a great job when they're going around and writing citations, and I get phone calls from people complaining that they didn't throw this out there, why are we charging this amount of money? But I'm gonna back our code enforcement officer, I may call Jim and make an exception where maybe somebody that's a city citizen, someone will be taking some off, but we're not completely taking the amount, the, the whole amount out, you know? So I think if we open that up, you're gonna see all kinds of stuff out there, I guarantee you.
I understand.
Yeah, my thoughts on that, Commissioner Langston, were that we would definitely have cameras up on site, but there'd be a lot to work out, you're right.
Good idea, though.
Okay, no, let's go, anybody else on code enforcement? Let's go, okay, one more thing?
I'm in support of doing something different. We've tried the letter, you know, sending them a letter, we've tried the calls. While we're thinking outside the box, one idea that I've come across is, is the possibility, if we have the manpower with city employees, we still have the truck, we have the capability, we go to these complaints, and we pick it up, and we send BCC the bills for our time, our efforts, and they pay us to do their job.
I'm in the process of reviewing the contract, there's, there's provisions in there, if they're violating the contract, you give them notice, and then they're looking what they damage, they get from them, they know they're violating, but I'm in the process of going through that right now.
I, I just feel like if we don't step in now, this is a brand new company, pretty much. If, if we don't explain to them what we mandate, what we require, then it's just gonna get worse and worse. We saw that happening with the, the other company.
That happens, I'm sorry to break it down, so that's all I have.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the police department, we've got the drawings back from Mr. Akry on the, on the police department layout. I talked to the chief, he said they tweaked it five or six times, and I think got it where they, where they want it now. And what we need to do is, is try to move forward, at least go out to bid and see where we are, doesn't mean we have to do it, but at least give us an idea of what it costs to rehab. So, open the floor to comments, chief's in front of us right now, I'll, I'll turn it over to him and let him talk this over with us, and then we'll have comments from commissioners.
You're, you're exactly right, Mayor, we've tweaked this thing several times over the course of probably the last eight or ten weeks, and Mr. Akry's done a great job. I think with the spaces there, we've done the best we can to get the needs that we need. I talked to Mr. Grantland, I think he's on the phone about getting together maybe this week and put together a bid specs and setting a pre-bid meeting for whoever wants to bid on it, and that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, all right, comments from the commission?
I, I looked at the plans, I support the plans of the chief's goodwill. My only concern, as I called the chief today, had a conversation about the upstairs, I want to make absolutely sure that we have someone go upstairs, and I, and I realize it's not part of the plan, but make sure and assure us that we don't have a roof leak, we don't have a mold issue. I hate to spend all this money downstairs and then we get flooded a year later, so the plans are fine, but let's also look at that upstairs area.
And we have had a leak, I don't know, you probably know more about that, we had a leak sometime last year, I think someone worked on that roof. We had, we did have a roof for duty inspection and check out the police department probably, probably years ago, and we also had a pole remediation.
I like being proactive, Commissioner Hoffman said reactive, and I, I would definitely support getting somewhere, someone to go look over our roof, the whole city hall, anything that impacted anything, just, we don't want to get fixing something up and having it damaged. I think the county can attest to that with their situation out there, so that's a good idea.
You're right, it's not a new roof, and when we get it out, we'll decide to move forward, we need to have it.
So, well, now, we, we need, we need to decide to go, we don't have anything we, we can actually send out for bids right now, do we?
Mayor, the plan is, that's, that's pretty simple, Mr. Grant is holding on with the chief, they're gonna try to put the specs together on that. The main thing they're gonna need is that set of plans, so we just need y'all to listen and go out and bid for it, we'll put it together.
Okay, okay, all right, so, any more discussion on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go out to bid on renovation of the, of the police department. Somebody just, okay, Commissioner Lowery made a motion to move forward the bid.
I'll second with a comment from the chief, does the chief realize that he doesn't have an office in this plan?
I think there's some mislabeling here, maybe, I noticed that myself, go ahead, chief.
What the mayor was gonna say is that there is some mislabeling there, everyone has an office, including me.
You hear that, Commissioner Ashbrook?
Yes, sir, second stance.
All right, second stand, okay, and I, I might add that, that, you know, if, if we come in and we decide we can afford to do this, you know, we, we do to improve the city hall, improve the building, adds value to it, so even if we get lucky and get money to build a whole new complex in the next two years, I still think it'll add value to this building, whatever we decide to do with it, so, that's, that's my comments. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, Ryan?
Aye.
Both same time, motion passed five oh, we'll get you a new home.
Thank you, sir. I, I did have one late addition you should have got back this morning. We've had the opportunity presented to us to trade in our firearms, handguns, and rifles at a very, very reasonable rate, cheap rate. If you read, if you read the little bio I put in there, there's several reasons to do it, but the best reason is, we can trade in ten handguns and eight rifles, and it'll only cost us two thousand dollars to get ten brand new rifles, uh, ten brand new handguns and eight brand new rifles. We would switch the caliber to where we shot the same bullet in both, it's something the sheriff's office went through last year, and it would also keep us compatible with them if we're in a situation where we're helping them, they're helping us.
Very good, and that two thousand in your budget?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion, anyone? Anyone, okay, we'll, you need a motion to declare these.
Just to be clear, we just, we want to make sure that we, that the, the eight and the ten that you have on your paper, we want to deem them surplus so that we can trade them. We'll be doing this to the law enforcement, firearm dealer, so, you know, we just need you to agree to allow us to surplus and trade them.
Right, so the motion needs to, needs to read, declare the, the list that you presented, surplus, and allow you to upgrade to new weapons for a cost of two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay, I hear motion to that effect. Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Hoffman, the second, second by Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion, anyone? All in favor, Ryan?
Aye.
Same time, motion passed five oh, chief, what do you think?
Thank you, sir, that's all I have, unless the board has questions for me.
I think so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Pierce, city clerk, do you have anything today?
No, sir, I do not, unless there's some questions.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Pierce? All right, next citizens to be heard, is anyone listening in that'd like to make comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion items by commissioners, so we'll start, Commissioner Lowery? I haven't had nothing today, Commissioner Langston?
I just want to say, you know, even though our beaches are opening in a certain amount of time, and the boat ramp is gonna start opening, we still need practice, social distancing, still need to understand that we have our sanitizer, William Maxx when available, just be safe. We're in a real delicate time right now, we don't need this thing to jump up on us again, so just, just be safe.
Very good, wholeheartedly agree to that, follow the CDC guidelines till, till they say it's all clear. Commissioner Hoffman?
I, I agree wholeheartedly, I, I think that we have to be practical. As good a job as I think the city does and the people we have on staff, we're not experts when it comes to viruses and pandemics, so I, I think we need to be listening to Sarah Heinz, her suggestions, and following the suggestions of the, of the experts, the doctors, and that's where I'm gonna be committed when it comes to opening or closing air. The only other item I have is, I mentioned at our last meeting, I asked the other commissioners start thinking about maybe supporting our city employees for working during this time. We found out that everyone that works for the city is pretty much essential. We didn't send people home because they, they have spots that require them to be there, keep the city running. We have police department, we have firemen that have to be there, but we also have people that deal with the bills, the water bills, and all these things. We have people that prepare the water lines and the sewer lines. So I'm gonna ask that our, our finance director start looking at actual numbers and finding out what can we afford to do for the city employees. The other job that I hold, representing law enforcement, we sent a letter out to every agency asking for some kind of hazard pay. We went back to March the ninth, so I'm gonna ask that the city consider some type of compensation for their employees, either in the form of a bonus or in the form of maybe pay time and a half for a certain amount of timeframe. We did it after the hurricane, and I still support the idea of doing it now. So if Mike, if he's still listening, if he can start crunching some numbers and have some type of total for us, we may not can afford what they deserve, but I think we can afford something, that's all I have.
Very good, because you see, item two on my list here says city employees, and so you, you pretty much stole, stole some of my thunder, I'm glad, I'm glad you did, matter of fact. So, yeah, I, I, I hundred percent agree, I've said it more than once, how much we appreciate all our employees and what they're doing, and some of them have had to step up, do a little more than they normally do, and we, we appreciate them, and I, I'll be working with Jim. Mike also to come up with something we can propose, hopefully by next meeting, we'll, we'll have something, I'll, I'll, I'll craft a letter of appreciation to them, each one of them, and then if we are able to do something monetarily, we'd mention it in the letter, that it'll show up in the next, next bank statement or, or week by weekly, pay, pay period. Commissioner Lowery?
I, I completely agree with you both. I, I don't believe we can probably do a bonus, but we can probably track, go back and track some hours, and I believe it's FEMA reimbursable.
Agreed.
Under, under the. Yeah, under the emergency declarations. Yeah, yeah. Maybe Mike can research that.
Very agreed, you, you hearing us, Jim?
Yes, sir. I guess that if you got to have a public point, you could go back, just go back to your resolution. But probably what we could do is we could go back to the day the chief put the revolution in place, Mike would get an idea of what you're looking at, and then you could decide there whether it's a snapshot or a re, a re, ever since the beginning. But you got any other, you got any other?
September, March.
March seventeenth, okay, so that would be the first day FEMA reimbursable, declared, state of emergency.
Yeah, I'd be good with that day. Anything's better than what we've done thus far, so I, I think they're deserving.
Yeah, no doubt, so anybody have suggestions, go to Jim, go to Mike, throw it out, we'll get a hybrid of everybody and come up with something we think we can afford to reward the city for their dedication and loyalty. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Oh, since we talked about BCC and city employees, my other thing, my only other thing is, is an email that we have been, all of us been getting for probably about a month from, from a representative of the PAC that wants PSJRA to give them some more money for some more studies. And so, the last thing I got is, they, they keep wanting an answer from us of some sort, so I'd like all of you to be thinking about it, talk to Bill Kennedy, our director, and I'm pretty sure we'll have a PSJRA meeting, first meeting in May, which is a couple of weeks, I think it's maybe like it's to May fourth. And so that'd be probably a big topic of discussion, but we need to let those folks know about that request, so that's all I have. Anybody else?
Mayor, do I get to speak today? Mayor, do I get to speak today?
Out of sight, out of mind. I'm just sad.
That's, uh, Ashbrook.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Uh, it's, yeah, I'm exactly right, out of sight, out of mind.
Well, I'll be, I'll be brief. I have something very, very important. Uh, I've been doing some tracking on a daily basis on the returns for the census 2020. Uh, right now, Port St. Joe has only thirty-six percent response rate. Last census in two thousand and ten, we only had a fifty-five percent. I spoke to a councilwoman from Port St. Lucy that told me that her finance director did the math and it costs the city about sixteen hundred dollars per citizen that does not fill it out. So it's imperative that we try to push people to fill out these, these census data. Uh, it's easy, you can log on to my2020census.gov, uh, and it's super quick to do. There's maybe fifteen, twenty questions. Uh, so just encouraging everybody out there that's listening, uh, to please fill out that census. It's, it's important to schools and our funding.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, we, I'll reach out to the chamber and as well as, you know, the TDC has a blast. It goes out and a lot of people look at. And I, I missed last week's store. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Croft has put something in the store on a, on a weekly basis, but I would hope he would put something in there also to remind everybody. So, that all, Commissioner Ashbrook?
That's it, Mayor.
Well, thank you, sir. Sorry I skipped over you, but you actually, you went off my screen here. That's why, I guess I missed you.
Gotcha.
Okay, I see, uh, Mike McCour, you have anything?
Uh, no, sir, I, I'm good. I'll get with Jim and we'll, we'll work on what we can do for our employees.
Yes, sir. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Some of our, we are adjourned.